Uh, Mr. Roger Crigger from Roywood Creek, Pentecost Hall in this church to do our invocation. Would everybody please stand and remain standing for our pledge?
It's been some time, but it is an honor to be here today. I want to thank you as, uh, we have the opportunity to fill in today. And as Minister of the Roywood Creek PH Church and Administrator of ACA, many of you may not realize that Evacuation Christian Academy, we are a fully accredited school right here in your area, of which we're thankful for. But I wrote your little bag there just to thank you for all that you do. Thought you'd enjoy at least the minutes throughout the day-to-day. And one wish I'll be a Merry Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Rest in peace. Our Heavenly Father, we're truly grateful and thankful unto you for all your blessings upon us. And thank you, Lord, for the beauty of this day-to-day. And I even thank you for the opportunity to be here with this leadership team of West County that you have put in position, dear Father. And I realize, Lord, they make a lot of decisions and things for the direction of a lot of people in the area. We just pray you'll give them wisdom and guidance in all that they do. Give them the peace of mind and truly just allow your blessings upon them today, dear Father, in all their business they conduct. And only God, we only ask for your blessings upon them throughout this holiday season as we just ask it all in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And thank you. Okay, and thank you, Mr. Crigger. Okay, uh, I don't know if anybody signed up for Citizens Time or not. I will open Citizens Time, and if there's anybody here to speak, here none, we'll close Citizens Time. Okay. Employees recognition of service?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Debbie Reeves was going to be recognized at this meeting, but Miss Reeves was not able to attend this meeting, so it'll probably be the same day as we would recognize.
Okay. Minutes of the previous meeting, November the fifteenth, twenty seventeen, I entertain a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Any corrections or changes need to be made to the minutes? Any discussion or questions? Here none, we'll do roll call vote. Mr. Willis?
Aye.
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 Yeah?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes with, uh, six with one absent. Dr. Housman is absent this morning, uh, for, uh, personal reasons. Uh, I think he'll be here tonight for the public hearings. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. I entertain a motion to pay the invoices.
So moved.
Have a second?
Say.
Have a motion, second, to pay the county's invoices. Any invoice any board member would like to pull out or discuss? Here none, we'll do roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
Yeah? Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Motion passes six with one absent. Uh, old business, Mr. Burr. Any old business bring in front of the board at this time?
Just the items that are on your agenda that I know of, Mr. Chairman, and that is, uh, the amendment to the performance agreement of branch botanicals. Mr. Farthing has drafted an amendment, um, to go with the action of the board last time to recommend to draft an agreement and adopt this amendment, uh, exchanging the $200,000 letter of credit in exchange for a deed of trust. Mr. Tully is here with us. Mr. Farthing has sent him, uh, a copy of the proposed deed of trust. My understanding from Mr. Tully is that it is acceptable, and he will be recording that deed of trust. Unless Mr. Farthing does anything additional, uh, my recommendation would be, uh, to authorize or to, uh, recommend the amendment contingent upon the recording of the deed of trust.
Thank you.
There is a separate document there also.
Authorizing the signature.
Authorizing the signatures.
I entertain a motion to accept amendment to the performance agreement and to accept the deed of trust, uh, upon its filing with the circuit court.
I make motion to accept the amendment.
Do I have a second?
Say.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask you to add to that amendment that those accepting the contingent upon recording the deed of trust.
Any question or discussion?
That, uh, property is, we are first lien holder on that, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Any more questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
Yeah?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Do a separate one, authorizing signatures of branch botanicals on the document.
Authorizing the chairman or county administrator to sign the document?
Yes.
Or vice-chairman?
Or vice-chairman. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion or questions? Do a roll call vote. Mr. Willis?
Aye.
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 Yeah?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Stephen, anything else on our old business?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, I'm not aware of any discussion.
Okay, we move on to reports. Treasurer, Ms. Gwen? Good morning. I know it's a busy time of year for you. Thank you for coming.
Well, I was just thinking our, um, October reports look a little slim compared to what they normally are, but I was pretty confident November is one of the more to make up for that. Um, I'll go through the financials first of all. Uh, for October, uh, in the consolidated account, our account had about the forty-six million, six hundred sixteen thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars. And of that in the general fund is twenty-nine million, nine hundred sixty thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars. So, um, like I said, I think November funding for the board looks a whole lot better because usually we're hoping for money already coming in, but with our delay on taxes, um, we have been extremely good, and I think Ms. Farthing and Joyce, our office has been as well because, um, our phones are ringing off the hook, people are coming in, um, oh, you know, pretty, pretty steadily, pretty heavily. Um, but, um, it's, it's going well, and thank you again for the extension on the tax deadline. Um, a lot of people still don't realize that it has been extended, so we're still getting a lot of calls, but a lot of people do. Um, I was actually out shopping in the craziness this past weekend, and I had a guy stop me and ask me about the deadline extension. And for all of that, it was a little crazy. So it was kinda, kinda interesting that someone stopped, you know, in the middle of the crazy shopping to ask about the due date, but, uh, but things are going well. So, um, we're staying open until six all of this week. We are open Saturdays and Monday Tuesday we're opening until six. And then, um, we will close regular hours until the, uh, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth of December, so I'll be open until six those days. Um, so I think we have a lot of people right now that, um, irregardless of when they get that bill, they are gonna pay it by December fifth, or they get it at the June, or they pay it at the June they get it. I think that's a lot of the folks that we're having right now. Um, a lot of our Alex Kim people that may not necessarily have the opportunity to find out that, that their life has been extended, but, um, but it's busy, but going well. Not all have really. Um, unfortunately, we have a chance to work through the numbers on what we've filled out. Um, we barely have time to breathe, so I haven't had time to go through what we've filled out and look at really what we've collected thus far. Six bills went out last, I forgot last Monday, two weeks ago on Monday. So I'll, um, be better next week when we have more numbers for you.
Well, I know it's been a challenge, especially with the new employees and stuff.
Well, actually, and they're doing really well. Um, they, they both caught on well, and, you know, um, we're in the same challenge as far as my other employee and I, we're in the same challenges between these people are, because, you know, this is our first tax season within the system. So it is a challenge for all of us, but it's going well. And, uh, my point of view is, you know, it's what you make of it. If you look at it from a positive angle, it's gonna go well. And if you determine it's not gonna go well, then it's not going to. So, um, you know, we, we, we all have our moments and we have our days, but when it's your turn, we have to break it and step back, right?
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Gwen? Thank you. Commissioner Revenue, Fay Parker? Morning Fay.
Morning, Fay.
Fine. Hope you had a good holiday.
Mm-hmm, thank you. The only thing I have to report on is Pepsi and Gatorade have withdrew their, um, uh, refund, their, uh, they withdrew the request for the refund for twelve and thirteen. And with the help of Corbin Stone, uh, we're gonna be able to supplement back for seventeen. So we're gonna get a bit more money from both of them, so that, that will help a little bit, so. I had toured the place twice, but you know, it'll be on there if you get me on there and look. I had no idea what I'm looking at. I mean, you know, I don't, I guess all of y'all have toured it and...
I haven't been in the place.
You know, you don't know what, what's taxable and what's not taxable until you start digging into it. And they used a lot of codes from, uh, different attorney general opinions that did not go under of what, uh, was non-taxable down there, but they had used those codes, so... And then after Corbin went with us and dug into the codes and everything, we saw that they shouldn't have ever been exonerated to start out with, so, you know, we supplement, uh, and so there won't be any refunds back to them, so, you know, I think that...
Well, that's good news.
Because that was gonna be a huge refund with the end of Stone, so...
You know, and, and, and I thank all of us on the board. You know, if somebody needs to do a refund because it's not taxable, but the interest, piling up the interest two or three and four years and then coming, then that's the threat's not right.
But there, a lot of companies are doing that throughout the state. Uh, there, since I hear at the commissioners' meetings, you know, they get ten percent in, uh, annors, but it's a lot better than what they can get at the banks.
And I've talked to Delegate Campbell and Senator Carrico, and, and I'm gonna try to meet with them sometime this week and, uh, talk about some other things and some other bills that, uh, were wanting to put in, but, you know, I think that's something we need to look at, the General Assembly needs to look at. Now, I don't mind paying them, you know, if they're, we taxed them on something that, but piling on all that interest for three or four years.
But just to, you know, file knowing that they're going to, because I think they know from the very beginning that they're gonna try to amend it and amend what they filed on, so, but, um, I hope y'all have a Merry Christmas.
You too. Does anybody have any questions for Fay? Thank you. Again, I wanna, I wanna recognize Pastor Davis from Grandy Christian Academy and the Baptist Church, and he has two government students with him today. That's, uh, kinda looking to see what we do, and I hope Mr. Willis answered some of your questions this morning. And I apologize for not giving you more time than what we had, and then after the meeting, if you wanna talk to any of us or, or Mr. Willis again, feel free to come on up and we'll answer any questions that you may have. Okay. Sheriff Nottingham. Chief, you got anything? Good to see you this morning. Uh, Water Committee report.
Uh, the Water Committee met on November the twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and seventeen, let me get up to date, and made the following recommendations. Uh, first is to authorize authorization of a leak adjustment for Mr. Robert Freeman, account number one zero zero seven five seven dash zero zero.
Okay, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion before we vote? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Willis?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next item?
Uh, acceptance of the MRP DC grant in the amount of $25,000 for updates to the West County SCADA system and to amend and appropriate the same.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next item?
To amend and appropriate $4,450 to nine zero five zero seven dash seven, shoot, can't read this one, four seven zero four one zero for the closeout of the Baron Springs Division One project. The amount is for engineering services provided.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion? Again, here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Willis?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Is that all from the Water Committee?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, uh, on the leak adjustment from Mr. Freeman, uh, the Water Committee, we did make a recommendation for the leak adjustment. The other part has requested being to set up payments, and we did not include that in the motion. Would you all authorize the Water Department to establish a, if you would set up payments to pay that, uh, leak amount off?
Mr. Horny, will you make that motion?
We just made a motion to this, but I'll make that motion.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, next item is Budget Committee.
Mr. Chairman, the Budget Committee met November twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen, and made the following seven recommendations. The first is to amend and appropriate a $1,500 donation from the Walmart Foundation to account thirty-one oh-two dash four six one two six zero.
Again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, um, there is a typo on that, that is $2,500 that should be amended and appropriated, not $1,500.
Okay. Mr. Willis, you agree to changing that motion?
Yes, sir.
Well, it was in committee, it's $2,500, right? I, I remember, he's just mistyped on this. So, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Item number two?
The second is transferring $20,275 from the Electronic Summons Fund to the General Fund for the Digi Ticket Service System and to amend and appropriate the same to account thirty-one oh-two four six one two six zero.
Again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Willis?
Aye.
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 Yeah?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item?
Transferring $3,638 from the Electronic Summons Fund to the Police Activity Fund for the purchase of N-card computers essential for the Digi Ticket System and to amend and appropriate the same amount to account thirty-one oh-two dash four seven zero zero one five.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Next item?
Uh, item four is amending and appropriate an additional $10,395 to the victim witness budget due to an increase in state funds.
Again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Uh, any questions or discussion? And these are all state funds, it's no county funds, it's, uh, the state is up their allotment for the victim witness. Here no other discussion, do a roll call vote. Mr. Willis?
Aye.
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 Yeah?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item?
Item five is accepting the Bureau of Justice Assistance Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant in the amount of $1,632.62 and amending and appropriating like amount.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Uh, any questions or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
Yeah?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
Item six, accepting $285 from sales of the animal-friendly license plate and amending and appropriating like amount.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. And will you explain, Mr. Burr, for this money, that it will be going for spay and neutering?
Yeah, it goes for spay and neutering programs, and since we don't do spay and neutering, we usually enter into an agreement with option two that they got listed on their form there with the Westland Animal Welfare League to, uh, take these funds and use it for the spay and neutering program.
Okay, thank you for that explanation for those funds. Again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Willis?
Aye.
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 Yeah?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Last item?
Amending and appropriating $2,308 to account twenty-one oh-six dash four six one five two five for funds received from the Library of Virginia for the clerk of the circuit court.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any other questions or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Willis?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Anything else from the Budget Committee?
Yes, sir.
Okay, County Ministers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I included in your package is just to share with you the Strategic Marketing Plan from the Virginia Industrial Advancement Alliance. Uh, Josh Lewis, Josh is, uh, continuing to do a good job of searching forward, trying to find leads for economic developments. He's also, many of them successfully found funds. He recently were able to get some funds from the tobacco commission and continues to look at trying to leverage funds from private sales. Just wanted to share with you all a copy of the, uh, the Strategic Marketing Plan. If there's any questions about it, any concerns, feel free to let me know, and I will share that with Mr. Willis.
Okay. Next item?
Next item was just an update on the, um, NACO Prescription Discount Card Program. Been talked about a couple meetings ago, so, uh, Ms. Collins contacted them to get the update. Uh, the card program is, it's still being used. I think it's probably a, uh, good time for us to use our public information officer and put out another refresher that, uh, this is out there and people can, can use this card with or without insurance and have savings on their prescription drugs.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a good thing from NACO, and it does save, well, it's already saved, uh, in September, it was what, uh, twelve hundred and one dollars and nineteen cents, I think, if I'm reading that right. Uh, savings in September to citizens of West County. It's a good thing, I think, that's what I was gonna suggest, we need to get another press release out and remind people that, uh, that this is out there, and it's a benefit for the citizens of West County. Next item?
Next item is Smith with Airport Commission. Uh, it's just a copy of their audit. They have been enclosed for your information.
Okay.
Next item is the, um, proposal for bond counseling services, uh, for the refunding of the, um, New River Regional Water Authority debt that is shared jointly. As I previously indicated, we're gonna have about an annual savings of about $28,000 a year over the next eight years of this with this, uh, with this proposal recommending, uh, entering or accepting the proposal from West today for, um, bond counseling services and, um, seventy-five hundred dollars.
I entertain a motion to accept the proposal.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Willis?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Anything else, Mr. Burr?
That's all I have.
County Attorney, Mr. Farthing?
I do not have anything to report, please.
Okay. Board of Supervisors, that's the Black Lake District Minister. House, Dr. Housman's not here, we'll go with, uh, Wes Whiffle?
The only thing I have was on roads. I received a letter on, first is a curving road on Rose Hill Road. Used to have sharp curb signs. They've been removed. There was an accident there recently. And the second was new owner has cleared brush alongside of the road. Is, he's requesting guardrails where there's a drop-off now. This letter was, a copy of this was sent to Mr. Russell.
Okay, is that all you have?
Yes, that's all I have.
Mr. Whiffle? Mr. Willis?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Port Chisel District, Mr. Hale?
Nothing at this time.
Lead Mine District, Mr. McRoberts?
I've had a call in on the, uh, the whole issue on Caskin Road.
Have anything else?
No, I'm there.
Okay, Spiegel District, Mr. Horny?
Nothing at this time.
And I have nothing at this time. Okay, next item is new business. We have the consent counter.
I make a motion to accept consent counter presented.
Have a second?
Second.
Any question or discussion or any item on the consent counter? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Willis?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Next item is a Resolution twenty seventeen dash thirty, High Meadows Road. Mr. Burr, you wanna give our overview?
Yes, uh, Mr. Cagley is here with us today. Um, what's before us is a, uh, proposal from the project, is a request, uh, from Hope and also from VDOT. Uh, if you are aware, uh, this has been a long process in, in working this out. Mr. Cagley, uh, has finalized all the requirements that VDOT needed to have met. Um, and VDOT sent this resolution in, and it did not hit me until I looked at it, but I would recommend changing this from High Meadows Road to Long Meadows Road. The original road name was High Meadows, and that's what they based it off of, so I would recommend revising this resolution to be, uh, Long Meadows Road. Um, the, uh, Mr. Farthing has been working with, uh, Mr. Cagley, uh, just to confirm Mr. Cagley's understanding and acceptance. We had to enter into an agreement with VDOT for the, uh, stormwater management system, which we in turn entered into an agreement with the developer for the stormwater management system. The developer has since sold his interest to Hope Incorporated, so Hope Incorporated has to, uh, accept the responsibility for that stormwater management system.
Okay.
Farthing didn't even have discussions on that end yet, so VDOT.
Okay.
So, recommendation here would be, uh, to, uh, adopt this resolution, and that way we can submit this to VDOT. And once we receive, uh, information back from VDOT, that they accept that this is in the state managing system, it will free up the, all the issues on that property. Yes, the bond is, the, the bond will be released. We got a, y'all already made a motion before to, uh, the, the bunny that was, uh, Alec, that he had in at the $16,000, that that is to be released and paid to them for the repair work that they did on the road.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve resolution, to adopt Resolution twenty seventeen dash thirty with the correction on the name changes?
So moved.
To have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
Yeah?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Resolution passes. Okay, next is Resolution twenty seventeen dash thirty-one, Virginia State Parks. Mr. Burr, would you summarize the resolution?
Yeah, basically, uh, we've, we've sent the information, uh, emailed out to all of you all, believe a copy of this. Uh, it just basically goes through, uh, the, the, the New River Trail State Park and the amount of visitors that it attracts and its importance to our, our local economy. Um, and, uh, just requesting that the, uh, General Assembly provide, uh, full funding to Virginia State Parks and, uh, that they're adequately maintained and operate, uh, to their current levels or better.
And I agree that, uh, New River State Park is a great asset to West County, and we need the General Assembly to support them. the General Assembly to support them. I entertain a motion to approve, to adopt Resolution twenty seventeen dash thirty-one.
Mr. Chairman, I like a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any question or discussion? Here none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Willis?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Next item on the abstract of the votes on November the seventh, twenty seventeen, general election.
Register has provided a copy of these two as required. I would just recommending that we're not in acceptance of the abstract.
Okay, entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and second to accept November seventh, twenty seventeen, general election result. Any questions or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horney?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Mr. Barr, is anything under other?
Yes, sir. Do you not have anything else under other?
Okay, see any other board member have anything to bring before the board at this time? Here none. We'll be in recess till seven PM tonight where we have the public hearing on the proposed issues, a bond of ten million dollars for the renovation of Georgewith High School. And we are in recess. I'll call the West County Board of Supervisors meeting back to order from recess. We're here tonight at seven PM for a public hearing for the proposed issuance of bonds by West County, Virginia. I'll read the notice. Notice is given that the Board of Supervisors of West County, Virginia, the Board, will hold a public hearing on the proposed issuance at one time or from time to time of bonds by West County. The estimated maximum amount of the bond proceeds to be issued is ten million in the aggregate. The proposed use of the bond proceeds are to pay the cost of the capital improvements to Georgewith High School and to pay the cost of issuing the bonds. The public hearing, which may be continued or adjourned, and at which persons may appear and present their views on the proposed bond issuance, will be held at seven PM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard on November the twenty eighth, twenty seventeen, before the board, in the boardroom of the County Administration Building located at three forty South City Street in Whiffle, Virginia. I will remind everybody, I know we just had one person to sign up, but I will open the floor up after that person speaks. If any other person that come in would like to speak, you have three minutes as an individual and ten minutes if you're speaking, or what was it, five minutes if you're speaking as a group. And now I'll open the public hearing for comments and Mr. Willis will be calling the names out and keeping the time.
All right, first up, Mr. Rusty Jones.
Don't need to smile. Don't need makeup.
Get your good side ready.
Mr. Jones?
I really don't have prepared comments, but a couple of things I just wanted to bring before y'all tonight. One is, is to kind of back up a little bit and say that a few weeks ago, I had the pleasure of going to Auburn Middle School. My son played a basketball game there. And the model there was the middle school was the old high school that had been renovated and it was beautiful. It can be done. We don't have to tear it all down. We can build something on what we got. Now that said, I think we need to dig deep and realize that the plan to just do Georgewith without considering the middle school implications is not deep enough. So I would encourage us to make certain we're at least looking that step beyond and how that middle school is going to integrate into what we're doing at Georgewith, even if we're not doing it immediately or funding it immediately. That's the first comment I would make. And the second comment, maybe y'all will address it, but everything I'm hearing is talking about the renovation cost early estimates being around fifteen million. You know, my experience in building anything is the first budget ain't the one you're going to end up with. And y'all know that as well as I do with your own projects. So why are we talking about ten million dollar bond if the initial estimates to just fix Georgewith are fifteen million? I just don't want to see us short finance it, put the county in a bind later, make it harder later to have to come back and ask for more and do more of these public hearings. At least define what we really need, keep it realistic, but don't short finance what you're doing. And that's what I'm asking y'all tonight. Consider the middle school with the consolidation up there to the high school campus, at least in a phase two plan, and at least on this initial funding, make certainly fund enough to do the job upfront and don't have to come back and fill in out a general fund or wherever we're coming from. And that's about all I got to say. I mean, I think we got to get off the point, move forward. So I think it's time for all the animosities to end and everybody to get the job done. And that's why I've come here tonight with hopefully a positive attitude to say, let's get this done right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay, that's the only person that signed up for the speaking at the public hearing, but does anyone else would like to speak? Anyone going once, going twice? Give your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Julia Tomiak and I'm a resident of West Whitfield. I live at one two four four Laurel Run. And I'm going to be honest with you, I'm not exactly sure what the purpose of this meeting is, but I just came to express my, that I'm in favor of funding the renovations to Georgewith and I'm in favor of you issuing the bond. I was at the school board meeting where the architectural and engineering firm presented their preliminary numbers and I just want to emphasize that I've heard supervisors speak in the past about wants and needs and all of the things that the school board members are looking at pursuing are definitely needs. A twenty-first century school needs to have adequate electrical lines and it needs to have climate control and it needs to have adequate data lines and it needs to be compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act and it needs to be a safe place for our students. So I don't think that the school board is asking for anything unreasonable. And I understand that you all are in charge of pursuing economic growth and stability for our county and I know that you are also looking at having to fund the Expo Center. And I would just ask that, you know, you remember that to create economic stability, it has to be a multifaceted approach. You can't put all of our resources into one project and that you make sure that you adequately fund all of the projects and a well-run, high-performing school system is just as important as the Expo Center would be. And also that you, when you are applying principles of financial responsibility, that you scrutinize all of your financial decisions with consistent vigor so that you are spending responsibly in all areas. And that is all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Give your name and address, please.
My name is Lynn Storms, two twenty-two Heritage Way, Whitfield, Virginia. And I don't have a whole lot to say. I agree with Rusty Jones completely and Julia Tomiak. And I just wanted to kind of reiterate what they said and let you know that they're not the only two opinions of that, that I agree with them completely. And I think there are others too. And the funding is really important and I agree especially with Rusty that, you know, we need to do everything we can to make sure that we have enough to do all that we need for the high school and the middle school. I mean, there's nothing more important economically and for the future of the county than those schools. And I just wholeheartedly agree with both of them and what they said.
Thank you. Anyone else? Give your name and address, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Wilson Bethard. I live at three twenty-five Century Court, Whitfield. I didn't come here tonight with a prepared remarks about something, but I do want to just give you a little bit about my background. I spent almost forty-two years in public education, most of it in administration in another state. And I want to tell you, the money that you're going to spend in doing this school is the best money you're going to spend in the next whatever years. The most important thing in your community is a good school system. If you want to bring business in, you got to have a school. You got to have a program. You got to have things happening. You got to have people coming into school saying, boy, I really would like to have my kid go to that school. That's what you got to have. You know, you talked about electricity, data processing and all that. That's the twenty-first century and we're in the twenty-first century. In fact, I've been retired about twenty years now and I couldn't go back tomorrow because I'm not up with what's happening out there. I'd have to take a few crash courses on what you need to learn. The kids that have the schools today, it's a whole different ballgame. I have four grandchildren in college. When I talk to them, what they're getting, they are light years ahead of where we were. So I just want to say to you, don't cheap Charlie what you have to do. If you have to get more money, go get it. It's the best money you will spend, far better than anything else. And I can just tell you, the kids that go through it really, really do benefit from it. Your athletic program is important, your music program is important, your extracurricular program is important, but your academic program is what it's all about. And that's where your money has to go and that's what you have to have is your philosophy for your school. That's all I have to say. Good luck.
Thank you. One more time, anybody else? James, good evening.
Good evening. My name is George James. I live at one thirty Dodgin Street here in Whitfield. And I really had not planned to speak, but I'm speaking. You know, I hear what Rusty said about we don't want to shortchange ourselves. We talked about ten million, fifteen million. I know when we first started this discussion, Dr. Perry asked me to serve on the original steering committee of this project. And we started talking about new schools and we're talking about large numbers, a large number of money that was required. And I recall the PowerPoint that Dr. Perry used in several meetings and the number one bullet point on those, on that PowerPoint read, and I quote, "Do it right the first time." We're going to do it right the first time. And so echoing what Rusty alluded to about ten million versus fifteen million, want to make sure that we're not shortchanging ourselves, that we're not spending money now that, you know, ten years from now, we're going to say, well, we should have done this, we should have done that. Let's do it right the first time, whether it's ten million or forty million. Because I can tell you, originally, and I'm hedging my thoughts and my feelings about renovating versus new. Ten million, thank you, but no thank you. We'll take that and put it in the bank and we'll go do something bigger and better and right the first time. But I think that song has been preached enough. But, you know, if we're going to renovate and use these funds, let's do it right the first time, whatever amount of money it takes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. Once again, is anybody else?
George Bailey. I live at two eighty-five Dogwood Drive over there, East Whitfield. And I just want to say thank you for having this meeting so that we can come and talk to you guys and listen to what you guys have to say about the money being spent. And I agree with the gentlemen and the ladies who have spoken already in the sense that we have to, my kids are going to be long gone by the time this happens. My kids will have been graduated by the time this actually comes to fruition, I'm almost certain. But the concern I have are for the kids that are coming up afterwards, are they going to have everything that they need if it's five, ten years from now? Are those things going to be behind where the other schools are going? So we do have to start thinking ahead, farther past today. And we talk about twenty-first century schools and what they need. My daughter came home and told a story the other day about her teacher, her smart, his smartboard broke. And he had to go out and buy a new one because there's not anything there. And so just want to make sure that when we put these schools together and we renovate them, we make them what they're supposed to be, that they have all the things that they need for these teachers to be as efficient at doing their jobs as they possibly can. I've said it before, we have the best teachers I've ever met in this county and we need to offer them the best opportunity to teach that we possibly can. And if that means more money, we need to offer them more money. If it means deciding how we're going to put it together, whether it's putting a middle school, and I know you guys have had this argument a million times, whether it's putting the middle school and the high school on the same campus because teachers teach at both schools and students go between the schools to learn, whether it's updating the agricultural department as well as these other things, you know, we need to take all that into account because if the buildings over here aren't fixed and the buildings over here are fixed, then are we putting these kids farther behind? So I just want us to make sure that before we, before you finalize the number of what you're spending, that we are taking into account all the things that need to be worked on, all the things that need to be fixed. Because like Mr. James said, if you fix it and then five, ten years from now, we're looking at needing to do something else because we didn't make necessarily wise decisions with the money spent. I'd love to have that. But thank you all so much for having this meeting at a time where we could all come. We truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Here none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Barr, which one of these things do you want to take up first?
Well, Mr. Chairman, what you have before you, with the ten million dollars that you all had budgeted, we have solicited through VACO VML Financing for the issuance of bonds, the amount, maximum aggregate amount not to exceed ten million dollars at a very favorable rate on this total rate of three point oh eight percent is what is available. In order for us to move forward with this bond issuance that has the ten million dollars for the schools, would request adoption of the resolution presented before you.
Okay, entertain the motions, adopt the resolutions.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion or questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
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 Aye. And the chair votes aye. Next item, Mr. Barr?
Mr. Chairman, included within that resolution is authorization for the chairman or the vice chairman to sign any and all documents and that is taken care of within the resolution itself.
Okay.
The other item is before you is a trust joint agreement to participate in the VACO VML in Virginia Investment Pool. And this is where the funds that will be placed when they come in and drawing down from and will be earning interest while they are in that fund. Treasurer will be the one executing this document, but she did just, she and I and Mr. Grant have reviewed this and she just requests a motion that the board agrees authorize the treasurer to enter into this agreement.
I entertain a motion to approve the treasurer entering the agreement with the joint trust agreement for participating political subdivisions in the VACO VML Virginia Investment Pool.
Mr. Chairman, I like a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any question or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horney?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next item, Mr. Barr?
Mr. Chairman, that is all the action that needs to take place for the issuance of these bonds. We will work with our bond council and VACO VML Financing and anticipate closing and issuing of these bonds on December twelfth, December seventh.
Okay. I want to thank everyone for coming out and it helps the board a lot to hear input from all the citizens of the county. It makes our decision making a whole lot easier. Is anybody else, any board member got anything to bring before the board at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one separate item that I would request to be brought before you. That is a handout that's been handed to all of you all. Do I want to take this up at this meeting? If you all want to delay this until another meeting in the future, we can do this either way.
I think we can take it up at this meeting. I don't see anything except for the last.
Basically, at the bottom of the first page, the deductions proposed and recommended by the committee, there is a change in the name there. This is all part of our contract that we have agreed to moving forward in order to sign this contract, request the striking of the name of George Zuber and the insertion of the name of Shannon Rogers in order to move forward.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, okay.
Give a copy of it.
I wasn't here this morning, but...
This is on the Apex contract. We're trying to finalize the contract. This is on the Apex contract, we're trying to finalize the contract and the, one of the deductions we had indicated a structural design by George Zubier. Mr. Zubier is not able to do that structural design, Mr. Shannon Rogers is doing the structural design. I do not want to have a contract that says George is going to be doing it with someone else, so I just request him to change in that name.
Any more questions or discussion? Here and none, we'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes six to one. Mr. Barr, is there anything else to bring for the board at this time?
I do not have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Any board member have anything to bring for the board at this time? Here and none, we are adjourned.